...I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Why don't they put my phone there?
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 Ultimately, I make the decision of whether we close or delay. I do it in conjunction with our Director of Transportation and Maintenance. We really do our best to try to make this decision by 5:30. Sometimes that's tough. But we actually have buses that are out on the road by 6 o'clock. And so trying to make that decision at 5:30 can be a little bit challenging. There's a big window between 5:30 and 7:30. That two hours doesn't seem like much, but the middle school and high school don't start till 7:35. There have been times where 6 o'clock, a squall will come in and you're like, dang, you know, but you made that decision at 5:30 and something comes in at 6:30 and it's a difficult challenge. So we try as best we can to make that at 5:30. We will make a decision periodically in the evenings. I know some parents, teachers, and especially students like it when we make those nighttime decisions. We try not to do that all that often, but if it's one of those, it's coming and it's just a no doubter, then you, you know, we can do that. We will utilize two-hour delays. If two hours can really make a difference, maybe the sun's out, maybe it's lighter, the township and the city gets to get on the roads a little bit more, it looks like the weather is going to improve, we will do and utilize a two-hour delay. We will not, and we have not, I guess I should never say will not, but sending students home early is a greater challenge. Once we have the kids, we're really reluctant to do an early release because we fear we're releasing some students to homes that maybe don't have parents. And so if it looks like it's going to get that bad as the day goes on, then we should have probably closed or done something at the early onset. We notify the public in multiple ways, but Instant Connect is the best way. You'll get an instant text, so if at 5:30 I close, I'm on multiple media sites, from our text messaging to many of the radio stations and things that you'll see down there. I do try to put it out to all the TV channels in Columbus, our local radio stations, and then Knox pages. We do put it on our website. So we do our best to do that. Trust me, it's not a perfect science. Trust me, there are days I go in and I'll get three or four phone calls and they're saying, great job.
No, it's people don't call.
Yeah. And, you know, ironically, even tomorrow is a weird sort of day. The first day where you get snow or slippery weather, I usually am a little bit more cautious. We get into the middle of this winter, it's like we're used to driving in tough weather, but here it is tomorrow could be a little tricky, but we've got parties going on, we've got a concert, and not that that should weigh as the ultimate factor, but there are some days where kids just want school to be off and then it's like, last day, really? So we'll be up early making that, that kind of a piece. This last part of this district update, I kind of put a little bit of music to it. I know many of you have had a wonderful opportunity to go around the district to see our holiday events. And many of us have been to all of them. You've seen some of them online. Our ninth one will be tomorrow night. So I took the first aid, threw a little music to it just to give you a flavor for what it might look like. And John, it didn't start. Oops, you know what? I'm sorry. Let me try this, John. I needed to do this. John scolded me here. What did I just do?
Move my back right there.
I know. Cancel? Boy, it's all making kind of funny music to us here. There we did go.
It's really loud in the house.
It's not good.
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 Samuel in the muggle right hand.
Oh, yeah.
I love your hats.
Jeremy Cattermore.
Shut off.
Right?
During the show, on the show.
Yeah.
There you go. Okay.
I take it Mr. Fireball was the gingerbread man?
Maybe not.
The other two things I have that might be of interest before we jump into a little bit more of the formal part of our meeting. After meeting with MBEA and both of our groups, we brought to you a calendar update last month. We had a couple ideas and we've decided that we really want to front-load some professional development next year. Traditionally, we go into each year with three days. Three days, it really isn't three days because a day and a half is generally at the elementary level is just for the teacher's work to get ready. And then we have our opening convocation, so that really leaves like one day of professional development. The teachers have taken on a lot this year and we gave them a lot. And we could have and should have done a better job of front-loading some PD. So you'll notice we have, we've chosen a schedule to front-load with five PD days. Again, one and a half will be taken away for other things. So we're going to start just a little bit later. Generally, we start on the 15th. We're going to start on Tuesday. And then we'll do our staggered start that we've always done. We've added a professional development day here in September, again, trying to front-load most of our PD as we go through. Traditional October, end of the first nine weeks, professional development day here. We're keeping our parent-teacher conferences the same. We were able to leave in this calendar the Monday after Thanksgiving, which was something that I think was very welcome. The winter holiday, Christmas time, goes back to being a more traditional two-week straight break because Christmas really fits in the middle of the week, so we'll have those two, we'll have those two weeks there. The one thing we had to take away to make this work, we used to have a professional day here in February. We took that day away. We're still going to celebrate President's Day, but we added it really up here in the front end, realizing that we get it.
That says February 14th, no school, but it's not shown on the calendar.
Yeah, shoot. I probably left, I took it off there as a color and left it there.
All right.
You were, you were, I appreciate you, Cheryl.
Sorry.
She goes, no, no, she really does a great job. And then spring break will be the last week in March. You're looking here at kind of the Easter timeframe. It's really late next year. You know, it's in that 18th, 19th, 20th timeframe. And, you know, here we are, we're back at the end of the year, graduation, you know, on Memorial Day weekend, and our teachers get out right at the end of May. So that's kind of the calendar we feel pretty comfortable with. It has reduced the number of student days from what it was by a couple days, but really feel that added professional development will really enhance some of the instructional practice that we have. Any questions on that? Any thoughts from the audience?
Yes.
I think it was well done.
Yeah.
And then finally, this is an item for information, suggested board meeting dates for next year. And again, we only give this to you early because we have an organizational meeting in June. If you recall, January, yeah, January, if you recall last January, we did this as well and we had anticipated that the Monday before the winter break that we'd have a concert and we didn't. So we moved this time back to 6 o'clock. So that's just for you to take a look at. Our board, our January work session, or, sorry, January organizational meeting will be on the 8th. Okay? And so with that being said, before we jump into recommended items for board approval, you're welcome to leave if you'd like to leave. If you want to stay, you're welcome to stay.
We'd like to thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, you guys.
Happy healthy New Year.
Happy Christmas.
Navy's for our kids.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
I have the perfect tree.
Hi.
You just can't retire.
This was everyone, so.
Notice she wasn't paying attention.
Dexter's counting.
No, I wasn't.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Bless you, everybody.
Bless you.
Hey, your student council guy. Mateo. Did he leave his jacket?
Mateo.
He was accepted to Yale today. How about that?
Oh, my gosh.
Impressive.
Wow.
You don't feel lonely out there now, do you?
Thank you again.
Yeah, thank you entirely. We have a number of items for board approval in this section tonight. Again, our organizational meeting set for January 8th, beginning at 6 o'clock here at the Field House. Item number two is the appointment of Steve Thompson to the Knoxville Career Center Board representing Mount Vernon City Schools. He did that for the last three years and we really appreciate his service and continued service, brings just a really unique perspective to that representation. And we have one home community school student participating in athletics. So those three items for your approval tonight.
I would entertain a motion for those items as read.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Do I have a second?
Second?
Thank you, Mr. Golladay. Were there any questions? Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Golladay?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you. And then?
And then we pulled out a motion here in this section. It's item four here. Motion to appoint President Pro Tem for the January organizational meeting, to appoint Jody Getzmann as President of Pro Tem for the January meeting.
Yeah, I wanted to make that motion, but I guess. So could we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. And you've got?
Dr. Bennett?
Would you call the roll? Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Well, hardly yet.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mrs. Golladay?
Yes.
And Mrs. Getzmann?
Obstain.
Thank you. Congratulations.
No, and I would just, I would just say thank you to Dr. Bennett for all of your years as President and.
I mean, great.
It's been a long time and Jody, we look forward for you. We're all going to still continue working together just like we always have. But thank you for both of your service there.
And thank you to Mr. Bennett also.
Yes. My driver. Thank you. I have an instruction. I think since we have executive session, maybe I'll just.
Okay.
Just give this tonight, would that be okay? I prepared it, but I think the first article you'll find interesting.
Very good.
And then the research article, I just wanted to call your attention to the fact about the proposed study that a bill was, is in, it was introduced in November, they haven't voted on it yet, but it would be then a national study on cell phone usage, so just to.
I found that to be really interesting.
And there was a study in September on just 200 students and that's what prompted this. And they found 97% of the students were using it during the school day, but the range was less than a minute, six and a half hours with the average or the median being 43 minutes. So they're trying to decide, you know, what's best, so.
Yeah, item two is an item for information. It's the field, the varsity softball team taking a trip to Florida in the spring. They've done that for the past couple of years and just wanted to bring that to your attention here in this section. We have no items for board approval at this time in this section, so.
Go ahead and join us here.
Okay. You open that bell. You just get the actual, the monthly report. Scroll down to the next page. You can see this is our cash reconciliation, the month of the 14 million. I'm going to scroll back up just a little bit there. You can see that we have just a little more. In the U.S. Bank, we've got that about $8 million. The rest of it's in Park National and various accounts there, so. On this note, while we're here, I'll say that we have been notified that the legislation that was going to do some changes with evaluations and so forth, that did not pass. And then there was another idea about changing some things with the homestead exemption, broadening that to help the senior citizens and some of the low-income people. That didn't end up getting passed either. They were expecting it to be voted on last week and they didn't get it done and so they ended the session without it. So all of the tax bills will go out as they would have ordinarily. That doesn't mean something might not happen later in the, in the year, maybe in the middle of the year, but as of now, none of those, the efforts that they had to make the changes for the evaluations and our evaluations did go up. So I think we're going to try to do something in January with a special meeting, maybe to have some discussion about that. So go ahead and scroll down. This is the page where you look at where we are. Now, these numbers are still with the 2024 forecast. I have a new one where that TAN session, will they have the new numbers in it especially? The only thing that basically will change will be those first, actually the first three because when property tax values go up, that makes our district richer and then that formula kicks in and the state goes down, but not, not imperatively. We're still much higher, the state goes down a little bit. And, and just, just for a moment on that note, I was in a webinar with the folks from OD and this, this fiscal year, the state increased budgeting or financing to public schools by 13.6% and next year, another 2.9%. And Aaron Roush, who's in charge down there of the finances, have never seen anything like that. That's, that's a really big jump. And so while some people might say it's never enough, that's a lot of money, 3.18 new million in spending over the biennium, so that's, that's pretty good. So, and we'll see some of that with the taxes and the state information as well. So you can see on there, we've got still only about 40% of the property tax. Again, that's because that was what was paid in January, which is the second half, when the, or in July, excuse me, when the tax bills go out in January, some folks pay it for the whole year. So you see more than 50% at the beginning of the year. This just started in July, so you're seeing people sort of catching up the rest, yeah. Your unrestricted and restricted grants, that's the foundation. That should be right around the 44% because it's for five months. And then the rest is on the salaries and the employees' benefits down towards the bottom. You can see again, those are right, right where they ought to be for the 44, about 40% of the year. So we're, we're right, right about where we thought we were going to be. Now, when we put the new numbers in, you'll see that the, the property taxes will be. That's good. Again, on our interest, 196,000 for the first five months of the fiscal year. And I was interested in this, so I ran a report and I shared it with you. If you want to scroll down, hopefully it's in there. I wanted to know where the interest was being posted to because by law, we have to post interest to more than just the general fund. So these are the funds that get interest. If you look at the first one, 136,000 to the general fund, that 196. We have, we have some money in the bond account, that has to have interest posted to it. So we, obviously we allocate it based on, you know, which is there. The 006, that's food service, 12,000 in there, that's just for this year. Anytime you have a grant or a scholarship fund, we have, obviously these are very small, but we do post interest to those every month. Self-insurance fund, our self-insurance fund right now is very healthy. $44,700 in interest doesn't hurt that, that helps it a lot. So when you've got some money and we've got it invested in a place like Meter, that really makes, that maybe makes a big difference. So all those together are 196,000, but they are spread out or different funds. So I thought that was kind of interesting and I shared that with you. I think the rest of that is just your list of, that's just our cash summary by fund. The next two reports are the checks that we issued and the receipts that we've posted. So you can always look at that if you ever see a check that you have a question about, you can just.
That makes a lot of sense that each fund would have its own interest.
We don't have to put, and we don't, and we don't post it to all of them, like the, like the principals' funds where they do, or the fundraisers, those kinds of things, we don't. But by law, we have to post it to these, so. And then we have a lot of donations here. We can go through those real quick. To Columbia from Dr. Michelle Carpenter, some coats and some tennis shoes. To Dan Emmett from Fredericton School Board, 150 in memory of Sandra Hatton. To Dan Emmett from Jane, Paul, and Diane Simmons, $50, Sandra Hatton. An Anonymous to Dan Emmett also is $10 in memory of Sandra Hatton. From the Credit Union to Dan Emmett, $100 in memory of Sandra Hatton. The Whole Family Trust, $50 to Dan Emmett. Jason Marley, $100 in memory of Sandra Hatton. John and Marie Brant, same thing, $25 in memory of Sandra Hatton. Emily Marth, $25, Sandra Hatton. Michael and Susan, Susan Link, $25. And there's another Anonymous one for $10. TG and J.O. Warner family, $50 in memory of Sandra Hatton. And then there's an Anonymous donation to Twin Oak for unpaid lunches. Pat Porter donated a tub full of winter hats and gloves and Dave Culperton and Howard Hannah, or Howard Hannah, donated some clothing again. So we are asking the board to accept those donations.
Just as a quick note up here on the lunches, I mean, we generally will allow students to charge up to three times. And usually once you get, after two, we start trying to contact parents just to bring them up to speed. If there are extreme circumstances, then we'll work with them individually. We may point them back to the free school lunch program, but there are extenuating circumstances. We'll utilize funds such as this to help students out. But three is kind of that, that number that we've kind of done. No student will ever go without something. So even if they're over their three, we have what's called a snack bag lunch or something, not, not nearly what a type A typical lunch would be, but if we can tap into some of those funds, we do for extenuating circumstances.
That's good to know. Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the financial report and also the political negotiations.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Golladay.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Workman. Were there any questions?
No, but just a thank you to all those that memorialized Sandra. She was a big contributor to our district for many years and her children attended Mount Vernon City Schools. So I know she was, had a lot of pride in the district, so appreciate all those.
That's nice, too.
Absolutely. And the principal there, Dan Emmett, did contact me and said that the family had asked if they could do that and send the money through us and it will be spent there and they'll keep track of it and let the donors know or anybody that they know how it's spent, but.
It's very kind of the family to do that.
There is.
And before I vote, before I vote, anybody who just was elected and got one of these in the mail, if you would just send me a copy of it, you could email it to me and I'll put it in the folder when you get sworn in next month. Okay, so, Ms. Golladay?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Ms. Golladay?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Obstain.
So just to jump back into the business, we do have one other item for business tonight. It is a service agreement for a foundational literacy specialist at Wigan Street. They continue to pounce straight ahead into the science of reading and so they have utilized some of their resources to do some Zoom professional development just to keep, really to keep ahead of this whole science of reading piece. So for your approval tonight.
Okay, I would entertain a motion for item three.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Workman. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. And you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Ms. Golladay?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Obstain.
So just to jump back into the business, we do have one other item for business tonight. It is a service agreement for a foundational literacy specialist at Wigan Street. They continue to pounce straight ahead into the science of reading and so they have utilized some of their resources to do some Zoom professional development just to keep, really to keep ahead of this whole science of reading piece. So for your approval tonight.
Okay, I would entertain a motion for item three.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Workman. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. And you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Ms. Golladay?
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann?
Yes.
Yes. Motion. Two items for student services.
Two items for student services, too.
We're down to first of them, I'm moving right along.
Moving right along. So just a couple items for information. One is a correction from an 11/20/23 board meeting with Jennifer Merrilies, who was just here. And I think it's a retirement effective May 31st of 2024. And then we. We have a number of items for board approval in this section tonight. We've separated these out for voting purposes. The first couple here are a deal with the Ohio School Boards Association. Item one is for membership dues, and item two is to be a participant in the OSBA Legal Assistance Fund. This is something we've done on a yearly basis. Dr. Bennett is on the executive board there, and so she is always gracious to let me know that, and we, we adjust accordingly, so.
Okay, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mrs. Getzmann. And would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann, yes. Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mrs. Golladay?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Obeying.
So just to jump back into the business, we do have one other item for business tonight. It is a service agreement for a foundational literacy specialist at Wigan Street. They continue to pounce straight ahead into the science of reading, and so they have utilized some of their resources to do some Zoom professional development, just to keep, really to keep ahead of this whole science of reading piece. So for your approval tonight.
Okay, I would entertain a motion for item three.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. And you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mrs. Golladay?
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Yes, motion carried.
And under classified staff, we have just a couple items for information. Denise Long is moving to a 3.75-hour cook at the transfer, and Storm Snyder is transferring to second shift custodian at Dan Emmett. So those are folks that had already been working for us, just making an internal transfer. Items for approval tonight, our number of appointment items, first shift custodian at Pleasant, three and seven-hour cook at the middle school. Courtney Hunt will be taking on the secretary duties at, for the athletic secretary's position. And multiple contracts, a couple two-year contracts, and then more, a couple two-year, two and threes, a couple two-year, four and five contracts, and a couple two-year, six and seven contracts. That's kind of the sequence as it goes. A couple substitute appointments, and we got a couple resignations. Todd Doyle had turned in his resignation, and I really miss Todd. He's done a great job for the district. I think he was looking to downsize just a little bit, and we certainly wish him well. He's been a real asset in my 11 years here, and so hated to see him go. And then we have a second shift custodian at Dan Emmett.
I would entertain a motion for those classified staff items as read.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Golladay.
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Workman. Were there any questions? Would you call the roll?
Mrs. Golladay?
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Yes, motion carried.
And under classified staff, we have just a couple items for information. Denise Long is moving to a 3.75-hour cook at the transfer, and Storm Snyder is transferring to second shift custodian at Dan Emmett. So those are folks that had already been working for us, just making an internal transfer. Items for approval tonight, our number of appointment items, first shift custodian at Pleasant, three and seven-hour cook at the middle school. Courtney Hunt will be taking on the secretary duties at, for the athletic secretary's position. And multiple contracts, a couple two-year contracts, and then more, a couple two-year, two and threes, a couple two-year, four and five contracts, and a couple two-year, six and seven contracts. That's kind of the sequence as it goes. A couple substitute appointments, and we got a couple resignations. Todd Doyle had turned in his resignation, and I really miss Todd. He's done a great job for the district. I think he was looking to downsize just a little bit, and we certainly wish him well. He's been a real asset in my 11 years here, and so hated to see him go. And then we have a second shift custodian at Dan Emmett.
I would entertain a motion for those classified staff items as read.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Golladay.
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Workman. Were there any questions? Would you call the roll?
Mrs. Golladay?
Yes.
Mr. Workman?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mrs. Getzmann?
Yes.
Dr. Bennett?
Yes, motion carried. There are a couple things. First of all, I just wanted to thank the music teachers and the students, and I just thought the concerts and the programs were wonderful, and the participation of the audience, the families that came, and just were, were so appreciative and just enjoyed it so much. So I thought that was really, really great. I also liked the weekly news with one of our swimmers featured on the front page. It was pretty neat with Landon Rush being a breaststroke swimmer and having his picture up there, and then the article about our swim kids and other athletes. So I appreciate the weekly news and bringing that to our attention. And I guess the last thing, I just want to wish all of you a very happy and healthy vacation, restful, stay safe, and enjoy the wonderful Christmas Eve, and I appreciate you. And Getzmann, would you like to?
Well, I will echo off of the music and elementary programs. They were fantastic this year. And there's a lot of hours that go on behind the scenes, and with our bus drivers transporting to locations, and it was, they were just great. I didn't get to all of them, but I got to five. Yes, I look forward to orchestra tomorrow. So again, I gave all of the board members a Giving Hope charity button. I was asked to pass those out to everybody. That was an organization that started just four years ago by benefiting six children when it first started, and this year, they took 70 children shopping. So an incredible, incredible program. I was able to help out this year. Jeff was there and helped a bit as well, and just the kids, it's just very appreciated. And, and the bus drivers do a phenomenal job with all of that, so we're looking to grow it even more next year. So they have some fun things planned, some ideas, and so hopefully, they can continue to, to service our kids and help them. They reached out this year to the CRC, was able to benefit some of those students as well.
I think there were 20.
Yeah, yeah, so it's pretty exciting. I mean, it's, it's just, and the kids were very well-mannered and appreciative. I got to work with the middle school and high school students, and they were, you just never know how they're going to receive something like this. And they were playing games, and they were having a great time, so it was a lot of fun. And Merry Christmas to everyone.
Mr. Golladay?
Thank you. Thank you to our few people that are left here, who are staying. And to those that may be viewing at home, I wish them a happy holiday season. This is kind of bittersweet for me, seeing the, the performances of the children. I just loved teaching, and our music teachers are fantastic. I'm just so, so proud to be a part of a system that I graduated from, that I taught for, and I'm now a board member for. It just fills me with joy and pride. So that is due to the community and the schools working together, and fantastic staff members, and a fantastic board and superintendent. So I wish everybody a happy holiday season, and stay healthy, and may you have good times. Thank you.
Mr. Ward?
Well, I too want to echo the, the music performances. I think I was probably most moved by one of the schools when some of the former students from that building came up and joined them at the end of it.
And signed.
And did the signing, and did all, and I was like, you know, the things that you do with kids, it sticks with them.
Yes, it does.
And that was a lesson there when you saw a middle school kid, or even a high school graduate that was sitting out there, and they just all went up and joined the kids. And that, that really spoke to me. So thank them for that. They know who they are. And, you know, and for you all, I just hope you get some downtime. I hope our educators get some downtime, recharge your batteries. It's, on the one hand, the school year seems like it's moving very quickly, but I know that there's been some, you know, there's been difficult times, too. And just to refresh and enjoy the season, family, and Christmas time. So thank you all, and stay safe.
Thank you.
I don't know.
Last but not least.
Yes, 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 yes. But I wanted to, again, congratulate East School for outstanding award. That, that was a neat presentation to see that, and the fact that so many of them were here, I mean, just shows the passion that they have, so I certainly enjoyed that.
Didn't you love the slide where all the kids?
Yeah.
Teared, you know, that was.
The best picture was when all the confetti was in the air. That was a great picture. But also like to thank Dr. Bennett for all your years as president. Wow, that's an awesome accomplishment. Thank you. Appreciate that. So I would also like to wish everybody a happy holiday season and be safe. Well, I too would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. Again, I can't say enough about, you're going to continue to be here, so we're not going to obviously do anything. Butch, thanks for bringing.
Yes.
And Butch and I, at the end of tonight's, we're going to, with Jeff, we're going to do the song of peace together.
We all know it, right?
But seriously, wish, wish you all the best, and it's, we'll get into the start of another year, so thank you very much. I would also say, now that there's nobody here, you didn't see Andrea, I was really impressed with your son and his diving exploits Saturday. Our swim team went against Watkins Memorial, and, holy goodness, he would die.
He loves it.
I mean, we're talking.
He's a great diving coach, right? We have a good diving coach.
He's very good, he is.
We, we had to keep working at diving coaches over time, but when I heard it, when I heard a two and a half, I was like, whoa.
Wow.
Yeah, he's pretty, he's pretty good.
That's great.
It was fun to see him. There's not many home events. It's so hard to get home events, and so when you get a chance to see him, and they really did a good job, it was kind of a senior, kind of a parent's, kind of a night. I noticed you weren't down there yet, so we got a couple, two more years? So, I mean, if already is a sophomore, we're seeing some of that. We're talking sevens, I mean, just way above some of the other, and they're all doing their very best, but.
Most of those kids have not start, this is their first six weeks of diving. Like, the coach has taken them from, one girl was plugging her nose at the beginning of the season, so they've come a long way.
Yeah. When you start doing inward dives and some of those things, and of course, then there's others who are going even further, so it's exciting to see. Okay?
I understand you want an executive session.
Yeah, we have an executive session just for the appointment, appointment.
I would entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Golladay. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you.